Hello, hello?
Nope. It doesn't matter, it's grabbing it from...
Testing, testing.
I don't hear it.
Mic test, mic test.
Yeah, I don't hear it in here.
Testing, testing.
Do I just have the volume down?
How about now? How about now?
What the, what's Newman?
Or supervisor or sitting chamber. All this damn automation that's going on, they're doing it there.
Oh, none of it's down.
Yeah, yeah, that right. And John often shows it, but no one wants to go. Everyone's like, I mean, two partners can be, you know,
Busy.
eating cheese. Kyle's like, do I really want to go?
Hang on, put on your ears, can you hear?
Oh, I don't want to, well, I have access.
Well, yeah, but everybody's a panelist, so it doesn't really make a difference. Can you hear anything? Testing, testing. Assisted listening, assisted listening. Testing, testing. I don't hear anything, do you? Testing, testing. Testing.
What's that?
I'm gonna try this one.
Okay, yeah, that's closer to you, yeah.
Okay. Good morning everyone. I'd like to call to order the Monterey County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, November 22nd. Do we have a roll call please?
Good morning, let the record reflect all supervisors are present with supervisors Adams, Phillips and Ruscio appearing in person and supervisors Lopez and Alejo appearing via video conference.
Thank you. Are there any additions and corrections for closed session?
There are none, Chair.
Thank you. So we will have closed session items number 1A through E. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on today's closed session agenda?
I see no hands raised.
No hands raised and no one coming forward. So with that, we will recess the board of supervisors for closed session and we will return at 10:30. Thank you.
I can, I can. Okay.
Sorry.
Look, here.
No, no, I really don't. Yeah.
Good morning, everyone. I am going to reconvene the Monterey County Board of Supervisors meeting for today, Tuesday, November 22nd, 2022. Forgive the kind of shuffling around here. We had guests in our seats for a long, long meeting last week, and now we can't get our monitors to do what they want, what we want them to do. So forgive me for that. Before we start our meeting today, I just want us to all take a moment to acknowledge the situation in Colorado Springs at Club Q. And I hope that you will join me in sending just prayers and loves for the life and the lives of those lives lost and for their friends and families. And my hope is that you also join me in the, in the faith and the hope that the kinds of crimes that were committed against people just like we are in so very many ways will stop, and there will be peace and justice throughout our, our world and throughout our land, but mostly in our hearts. So with that, could we please call for a roll call?
Good morning. Let the record reflect, all supervisors are present, with Supervisors Adams, Phillips, and Root Askew appearing in person, and Supervisors Lopez and Alejo appearing via video conference.
Thank you very much. And if we could please have the announcement from our Spanish interpreter.
Muy buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Diego Celis. Seré el intérprete inglés-español, español-inglés para la reunión de hoy. Si usted está planeando hacer un comentario y necesita servicio de interpretación, por favor hablar lenta y suficientemente fuerte para que yo lo escuche. Por favor hacer una pausa al final de sus oraciones para asegurarse que tengo la oportunidad de interpretarle. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much, Mr. Celis. And I always love this part of our agenda where we do the Pledge of Allegiance. And this month, this week, rather, in honor of National Military Family Appreciation for the month of November, we have asked Jack Murphy to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'll tell you a bit about Jack. Mr. Murphy is the interim director and county veteran services officer for Monterey and San Benito Counties. Prior to joining the county as a management analyst and accredited veteran service representative in November of 2020, Mr. Murphy served as the deputy executive director of the Veterans Transition Center, a nonprofit that provides housing and services for homeless and at-risk veterans and their families. Mr. Murphy served in the U.S. Army for 21 years, to include multiple combat deployments to Afghanistan and Iraq, and retired in May of 2016. Mr. Murphy volunteers as both program coordinator and a peer mentor for the Monterey County Veterans Treatment Court and the Military Diversion Court Programs, providing justice-involved veterans and active-duty servicemen with community-based rehabilitation and treatment support. He's on the Board of Directors of Dentistry for Vets, a local nonprofit providing low-cost dental care for veterans in need. Mr. Murphy was recently honored as District Five's recipient of the 2022 Monterey County Veteran of the Year. Mr. Murphy and his family live in Monterey, California. I'm proud to have him as one of my constituents, and equally so as my neighbor at work, but he's moving over to be Wendy's neighbor. Thank you for being with us, Jack.
Thank you, Chair Adams. It's my honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, America, and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for being with us today. And now, moving forward, we have our ceremonial resolutions. There are four of them. Three are going to be presented, and I will turn this part of our agenda over to my colleague, Supervisor Wendy Root-Ascue, who is going to be presenting the first couple of, excuse me, what, for a sec, the first couple of...
Anyone need a motion?
I know that. We are going to be presenting the first couple of resolutions. She will lead us in that. But before we do that, I'd like to see if we could entertain a motion or from, let me stop. Is there any member of the board that wishes to make any comment on the, the resolution, or sorry, on the ceremonial resolutions today? Seeing none, and I do not believe there are any hands raised. Is there any member of the public who wishes to make any comments on the ceremonial resolutions today?
Vote approval.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Root-Ascue?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Adams?
Aye. Thank you. And now with that, I will ask Supervisor Root-Ascue to take the podium, and we will be doing our two resolutions. The first, adopting a resolution proclaiming November as Military Family Appreciation Month in the County of Monterey.
Me, sorry, the Morgan family is standing.
Thank you.
Good. Stand check. Okay, I've got to go. You can come right up to the front, right here. Thanks so much for coming to our meeting today. Elaine, come join us as well. Yeah, thank you. So today, we're going to be recognizing November as Military Family Appreciation Month. And this is significant for me as a child who grew up in a military family, moving almost yearly for a formative period of my life. And today, we're, we're going to have the Morgan family receive our appreciation resolution. A little bit of information about the Morgan family. The family consists of Vincent, who has served in the Air Force for the past 14 years, 15 years this coming January. It's taken the family, the military has taken this family from the West Coast to the East Coast and back again, with FaceTimes to England and Afghanistan. Ashley, Mama Ashley, is in her fourth year of homeschooling the children. Nicholas, 14 years old, Military Youth of the Year 2021, loves to play the guitar. Charlotte, who's just a year older than my son, is 11, enjoys art and has an infectious laugh. And then Jackson, the Jackson, nine years old, who has a flair for magic in creating stop-motion videos. And our little one, Abigail, hey, Abigail, how are you today, is three years old, and her happiness is surpassed only by her strength. We love to hear that and see that. And then also with us today, we have Elaine Roelix, who is our military school liaison. And I used to spend a lot of time in meetings with Elaine when I was on the school board. So thank you for joining us today. And then a few of our statements from our resolution here, and I'll have you hold this, if you could help me hold this. I'll let you hold that up for everyone to see. So whereas November is recognized as Military Family Appreciation Month, a time for the County of Monterey and beyond to honor and recognize the unique sacrifices and challenges that family members make in support of their loved ones in uniform. Whereas no matter what rank or branch or where life has taken military families, they share common threads of service and sacrifice. Whereas spouses of those in the military are our fellow citizens and neighbors, in their service to their families and their country, they represent the true strength of America. Thank you. And whereas every single state has taken action to streamline professional licensing and credentialing processes so that military spouses can continue their work when they move across state lines without having to recertify for a job they're already qualified for. It's my honor and absolute privilege to recognize all of our military families who passed through Monterey County, who've chosen to make Monterey County home, and who bring so much strength and experience and diversity to the rich fabric of Monterey County. Thank you for joining me up here today. And I'll see, Dad, do you want to make any comments? I don't think we prepped you up for this. Or Elaine? Maybe I'll say, Elaine, did you just want to speak to any of the other families that we have in the work that you do?
Absolutely. You know, we do have a lot of families moving in and out of Monterey Peninsula to Presidio of Monterey and the Naval Postgraduate School through, you know, four times a year for graduations at NPS. And then with the Presidio, we have our language school. And so families can be here from a year to two years, three years, depending on assignment. But they come here to study and then move into some very serious situations protecting our nation. And so the Morgan family, they're amazing. One of our exemplary families, Nick has been an amazing Youth of the Year for us, and he's looking to apply for Youth of the Year for 2022. And so we're glad that he represents our base. Thank you.
And our second resolution will be also presented by Supervisor Root-Ascue. And this is adopting a resolution proclaiming December 2nd as Kathleen Founds Day. So this is not going to be presented today. Okay, thank you. We are not having that as a presentation. Well, so now, we're going to adopt a resolution commending Chief Deputy James Bass upon his retirement from 28 years of public service with the Monterey County Sheriff's Office. And this is going to be presented by Sheriff Bernal to Mr. James Bass. Thank you so much for being here with us.
Well, let me introduce you to Chief Bass. He, Chief Jim Bass began his law enforcement career as a deputy sheriff with the Monterey County Sheriff's Office on June 27, 1994. He went on to work assignments in jail operations, transportation, corrections, emergency response team, and spent eight years as a facility training officer, helping teach and mentor all newly hired deputy sheriffs in Monterey County at the jail. He promoted to sergeant in 2006, where he supervised jail operations and worked in the special assignment of classification sergeant, leading and supervising the work and special investigations conducted by the classification unit. He promoted to commander in 2013, where he managed in three different assignments. He had to oversee a period of transformational change in the county jail, as jail programs and inmate population shifted dramatically, and convicted felons were being sentenced to county jails instead of state prisons as a result of public safety realignment legislation and Proposition 47 from 2014. Jim was promoted to captain in 2015, where he was responsible for oversight and daily management of the Corrections Bureau. And in that role, he developed expertise in the ongoing jail litigation and led the jail through sweeping reforms for security, medical, mental health, dental, ADA, suicide prevention, and the use of sobering and safety cells, and use of force. He served in the lead role for the Sheriff's Office of the 576-bed jail expansion project, including the development of staffing and operational plans for the jail expansion. He was appointed as chief deputy in 2019, where he was responsible for overseeing all aspects of the Corrections Operations Bureau. And he continued to serve in the lead role for the jail expansion project and lead, led the county in developing a partnership with the California Department of State Hospitals to open a jail-based competency treatment program, the JBCT program in the jail, which brought critical behavioral health treatment programs and funding to the county and created a regional treatment program for inmates from Monterey, San Benito, and Santa Cruz Counties, and also led the Sheriff's Office in development of a medication-assisted treatment program in the county jail to better assist offenders with abuse, substance abuse disorders. Jim's continual dedication to improve the safety and security of the Monterey County Jail for all offenders, employees, contractors, and volunteers, along with his commitment to improving the treatment programs for offenders' health, behavioral health, and substance abuse issues, and his steadfast leadership will be greatly missed by his colleagues at the Monterey County Sheriff's Office and the people of Monterey County. Thank you for your 28 years of service, and especially for the last eight years. I couldn't have found, had a better person to run the Monterey County Corrections Operations Bureau other than Chief Jim Bass. So congratulations on your retirement, and I wish you many years of good health and enjoyment in your retirement with your family. I think there's a, there's a resolution for you up here somewhere. But along with the resolution, we'd like to present Chief Bass with, with a plaque that we give all of our employees, presented to Chief Bass with honor and recognition for over 28 years of dedicated service to the Monterey County Sheriff's Office and the citizens of Monterey County, June 27, 1994, to December 20, December and the citizens of Monterey County, June 27, 1994, to December 2nd, 2022. And I'm sure Susan's going to really miss him, right? Congratulations.
Sheriff, I'd just like to say, I've worked with Chief Bass in a number of my capacities throughout the years. And I can't think of anybody who has done a better job of protecting us, representing our county, especially running one of the toughest jails. And during the Hernandez litigation, got us through that and really made some upgrades that we should all be proud of. So thank you for your years. We all appreciate it. So we'll get you back on the basketball court up at Rancho Cielo now.
Captain Bass, I want to offer my thanks to you as well. You were one of the first people I met when I was elected to this office as far as figuring out things that were going on within the jail. And you were so kind and so patient. You gave me a terrific tour. I seem to recall that when we went to the autopsy and they were performing one, I was able to stay. And I think Sheriff Bernal had to leave the room. But I appreciate so much the openness that you've always approached things. And I really thank you and value so much the dedication that you brought to your job and to the entire county. Thank you so much. And I really wish you a great retirement.
And through the chair on behalf of County Council's office, I don't think people appreciate how many weekends, how many evenings Chief Bass works. And he is always there for the attorneys in our office and always willing to help no matter what the situation is. So it is, I am incredibly sad you are leaving, but it is extraordinarily well deserved.
And if I can, Madam Chair, I just want to thank Chief Bass for his commitment to all of our constituents. And I'll say that I hope we are not strangers moving forward. I know that we've run into each other a couple of times on the weekends. So I hope that that continues. And I know you always have a honey do list on the weekends as well as the work you do for Monterey County. So I look forward to running into you after some of those are completed while we grab a great meal. But congratulations and thank you for your service.
Let him catch his breath here.
Yeah, how much does I get through? It's been an honor and a privilege. Not much. I've enjoyed every minute of it. I'm going to miss the people. Thank you.
That shows you the passion he had for the job.
Thank you so much. We also have a ceremonial resolution for recognizing Mayor Clyde Roverson on his retirement from the City of Monterey, which will also be presented at a later date. Let me go back and ask our clerk if there are any additions and corrections to today's agenda.
There is. There is a removal of item number 22 under the health consent calendar, and that is at the request of County Council.
Thank you very much. Great. Okay, with that, we will go to appointments. We have nine appointments, eight of which we will take a first motion on. And then we have one appointment, item number seven, which we will pull and have a separate vote on. So with that, I'll ask if there are any comments from the board on any of the appointments other than item seven. Seeing no hands or comments, is there anyone in the public who would just comment on the appointments other than item seven? Seeing none? Thank you very much. Sir, second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Could we please have a roll call vote on items five, six, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13? Supervisor Phillips?
Hi.
Supervisor Lopez?
Hi.
Supervisor Root Askew?
Hi.
And Chair Supervisor Adams. Hi. Thank you very much for that. And now we will go to item seven. And this item is, the board will need to appoint one of three nominees who have all applied to be the representative of the nonprofit or community representative with the term ending at the pleasure of the board. And this will be nominated by the Economic Development Committee. And we have three nominees for this position. We have Angel Augusto Rivera Gutierrez, we have Kathleen Lee, and we have Nicholas Kite. And I will see if there's some discussion that wishes to be had by our board for today on any of these. Supervisor Root Askew?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted, first of all, thank the Economic Development Commission and our staff for sort of going back to the drawing board and making some additional efforts to ensure that we have the incredible diversity of experience that our community and economic development efforts should benefit from. I know we still are struggling. I saw the matrix last night. We are still struggling a little bit to figure out how to get demographic diversity, geographic diversity, I should say, on the commission. And so I hope that that's something that we can continue to prioritize and work towards. But having made those general comments, I do know that we have one of, at least one of the the recommended individuals, Nick Kite, with us in the room. I would love to give him the opportunity to make comment on this item and any other discussion. I'm happy to bring it back, make a motion. Thanks.
Okay, that would be fine. Mr. Kite, would you like to come forward?
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Nicholas Kite. I am currently live really close to Wendy. But actually, at the end of the month, I will be moving. I'm still within Monterey County, but out in Carmel Valley. So I love this county. A little bit of background for me. I was going back to the military families earlier. I was a product of a military family here in Monterey, born on Fort Worth. My father was attending the Naval Postgraduate School at the time. So like them, I've moved away and moved back and moved away and moved back plenty of times. And I keep finding my way back here, something in the air. I don't know. I just love it here. Currently am the Restore Director for Habitat for Humanity Monterey Bay. So I run two resale shops to fund the building of affordable homes here in Monterey County and Santa Cruz County. I run the store here on Fort Worth and Seaside, and then also our new store in Watsaville on Main Street. I also served on a few different nonprofit boards. The Monterey Stingy Jelly's Disc Golf Club is one of them. We've been fighting for the last few years to get our disc golf course back at Ryan Ranch, which we have now reopened. I think we've been in 120 days. So after being closed for several years, we're happy to be back. Also serve on the board of the Marina Youth Arts. So that's probably one of my favorite ones. I am currently tasked with wrapping all the utility boxes in Marina with youth art on them. So that's one of my favorite projects, as well as volunteer a lot with Citizens for Sustainable Marina and doing things like that. So pretty well-rounded and diverse background with several nonprofits. Moving out of Marina, I was on the Recreation and Cultural Services Commission for the city Marina. Now moving out of there, won't be able to do that. So I want to direct my passion somewhere else. So I'm here. So I appreciate your consideration, and thanks for having me.
Thank you so very much, and thank you for being with us today. Let me just ask if either Angel Augusto Rivera Gutierrez is with us, either on Zoom or in the chambers? I'm not seeing any hand raised. I know Mr. Gutierrez is from Region District Three, rather. And Chris, I don't know if you want to make any comments, if you are aware of, if you know Mr. Rivera?
He hasn't reached out or been in contact.
Okay, thank you very much. And then we also have Kathleen Lee from District Five, who is serving as a director of Point Lobos Foundation. And Ms. Lee, I don't know if you're on Zoom. I don't see you here in the chambers. Okay, so thank you so much. So there we are. We have three people who have indicated an interest in their serving their community by being on the Economic Development Committee. And I will
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm on the Economic Committee with you. I'm assuming you're going to be staying on there next year. I'm going off, so I'd take the lead with your motion, who you would nominate.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to make a motion. Nick Kite, thank you for being here today. You're clearly committed to the role. And I'd like to move that we select Nick Kite as our nonprofit representative for the Economic Development Commission.
And I will second that. Thank you so much, and thank you for your comments, Supervisor Phillips. So with that, could we, we've asked for a comment? There we are. I see your hand is raised. Supervisor LaHo?
Yeah, I want to speak to needing more South County representation. Angel Rivera Gutierrez is only South County applicant. And I think it's important that disadvantaged communities in South County should have a representative on the Economic Development Committee. Secondly, I think we're all familiar with Kathleen Lee as well. Served numerous roles from Dan Feinstein's office to Congressmember Panetta's office to be an chief of staff for this county, and I would be comfortable with her as well. But I do believe, because we often talk about needing representation for disadvantaged communities, he is from District Three, and I would support him being appointed.
And that's a substitute motion. I would second it.
Thank you.
His motion.
Just do want to make it clear that there are other representatives from the southern part of our county. I believe that Ida Lopez Chan is from the District Three, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, she works in Solana.
Okay, great. And I'm so sorry that I don't have my
From the peninsula.
I am very conscious of that. And I am, I'm sorry that I do not have a listing of all of the districts that are represented by, that are on the committee, but I'm quite sure that we made every effort. And I do believe that we have someone from each district on the, on the committee at this point. So my understanding now is that there, we have a new motion, a substitute motion on the floor. And that was to nominate Angel. And there was a motion and a second, so we will take a roll call vote for the substitute motion. Is there any member from the public that wishes to comment on this item? Okay, so now we have the substitute motion that we are voting on, which would be to appoint Angel Augusto Rivera Gutierrez. We could please have a roll call vote. Supervisor LaHo?
Hi.
Supervisor Phillips?
No.
Supervisor Lopez?
Hi.
Supervisor Root Askew?
I'm hesitating. I just, I did just pull up the spreadsheet that was shared with the district representatives with the list of individuals who've been nominated and appointed to the commission. And I I think given the fact that Nick Kite is here presently with us, I'm comfortable holding to that. So my vote will be no on this, but I will restate and maybe ask if it's possible to pull up the list of the spreadsheet that shows where the districts are. I think that that would be something that we do need to take another look at. We have one person from South County, one person from District One, and only one from District Two, it appears, and only one from District Four. So I'm going to vote no, but I think we need to we need to double down on if we're going to do this work, we have to be serious about it. So my vote is no.
And Chair Supervisor Adams? No. So we will go back to the original motion then, which was to appoint Nicholas Kite. And I believe there was a motion by Supervisor Root Askew, and I seconded that. And if we could have a roll call vote, please. Supervisor LaHo?
No, because Salinas Valley is underrepresented.
Supervisor Phillips?
I would have liked to seen the information on the fair representation since we went back and analyzed this and went back, but yes.
Supervisor Lopez?
No.
Supervisor Root Askew?
I'm going to say yes, with the comments that I made earlier standing, I think this seems to be revised though. The entire, again, we've got to take another look at the commission, but I'm voting yes.
And Chair Supervisor Adams? Hi. And I want to say that this has been more than a year in working on this. Supervisor Phillips and I started working on this, the composition of this committee over a year ago. And we have made every outreach effort that we possibly could. We've worked with each of you as supervisors to help us find people that we could recruit so that we would have a very fair, a very diverse in every aspect committee. And unfortunately, this is where we stand now. I believe that Mr. Kite will be an excellent addition to our committee, and I'm looking forward to working with you. I must admit, I was happier when you lived in D4 because then I was really very thoughtful, very thankful that we had an additional person from that district. But I welcome you to my District Five at any rate. So with that, we have, we have closed that item, and I'm very thankful that we have been able to do so.
Well, we had to add one more seat to give Salinas Valley more representation, and this board refused to do that intentionally.
So now we will move forward with our consent calendar. We have items 20 through 45. Is there any member of the board that wishes to pull anything from the consent calendar? Comment or discussion?
Just on 29, just a big cost overrun, and I'm not sure what the transfer switch thing is. There's an automatic transfer switch. So I just like a, when I, when I saw that originally bid was 217 and now it's 529, and we're adding another 312. I'd just like a little more explanation. Thank you.
Okay, very good. And we could go ahead and do that now, if you'd like. Pretty hard to question the guy that just got all the applause.
I may not, though. Good morning, Board. To answer Supervisor Phillips' question, automatic transfer switches, there, when there's a generator and the power goes out, it automatically transfers into the generator power. So when the project was originally, a rough estimate was put together. We did the information with what we knew. And once we go through engineering, then we get actual cost. And that's when it was determined that the project had a funding shortfall, and this is what the funding request is for.
Any other additional comments?
This isn't the only one. Not on all the agency, I've seen the bids are coming in almost often twice of what we originally estimate. Go ahead, Chief Bass. Glad you got your voice back.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Your composure.
Just to add, you know, this is an important piece for us in that it operates the kitchen area of the jail, our dorm areas, and then down into our receiving slash intake area. And so that transfer switch is vital to be able to restore that power as quickly as possible. We've got a lot of cameras, recording equipment, not to mention the door operations that fall under that generator. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Bass. Great. Thank you very much. Is there any other member of the board that wishes to bring anything to our attention or questions or comments on anything on the consent calendar? Supervisor Root Askew?
Thank you. I just had two questions, one on 35 and one on 38. And I can ask those now.
Okay.
Okay, 35 is a contract to expand our comprehensive evacuation management services for first response and crisis management. And this is going to work in concert with the Alert Monterey County efforts that notify people via reverse 911 when there's an emergency or crisis in their area. And I just had a question, will people need to sign, re-sign up for Alert Monterey County? Or will that information be automatically And I just had a question, will people need to sign, re-sign up for Alert Monterey County, or will that information be automatically transferred? So anyone who's signed up for, and we've worked really hard to get people to sign up for Alert Monterey County. I don't want to lose any of that data or opt-in participation in this transfer process. But I do think that the Know Your Zone campaign is important, and just wanted to get clarity on that point. I'm not sure if we have anyone from Emergency Services with us today.
Thank you. I don't know if there's anyone in chambers that could respond to that, or if there's anyone at the DAS or on Zoom that would be able to respond.
Supervisor Askew, this is Tracy Malfino with OES. Most of, if not all, the data from Alert Monterey County that's in the current system will be able to be moved over into the new system. And we will also be putting out a new public awareness campaign, both Know Your Zone and to update your information for notifications. So that'll take place early next year.
Okay, fabulous. Thank you for that clarification. And then on item number, sorry, and item number thirty-eight, this is a retroactive contract for Laguna Seca with Dynamic Press for printing of signs and collateral material. And I just, you know, reading through the details, it's, it appears that it's located, it's a company that's located in Santa Cruz. And I was just wondering if we've ever considered companies based in Monterey County, or if maybe the reason we're using this is because it's a union print shop?
I don't know the answer to that, but my expectation is that Mr. Ishi may have some input.
This is Ryan Bell, Administrative Operations Manager for Laguna Seca. How are you doing today?
Well, thank you for being with us.
Thank you, Chair. I think I can answer that for you. Dynamic Press has been a, been used by Laguna Seca for a number of years and have offered the services that is not in my understanding, it is a union shop. It's, it's the one that we have gone through and have consistently provided us the quality services that we need for the, for the facility.
And you said that it is a union shop?
It is not. To my knowledge, I don't believe it is, but I can look into that and get you an answer.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. And I, I recognize it's been a company that we've used for many years, and it is a retroactive approval. But, you know, as we talk about the benefits of Laguna Seca and spend in the community and job creation, you know, for a contract upwards of thirty thousand dollars, I would just hope that we can always be looking at how to put those dollars back into benefiting Monterey County businesses and union shops when, whenever possible. So happy to approve this today, but wanted to be really clear on record with those, those comments.
I don't think there's any union printers in Monterey County. I think the nearest union shop is in Santa Cruz, Community Printers.
Supervisor Leho, have you any questions or comments on any items on the consent calendar today?
No, 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 none. I'm making a motion to approve.
Supervisor Lopez, any comments or questions on the?
No additional comments or questions.
Thank you very much. Is there any member of the public that wishes to pull any items from the consent calendar for questions or comment? And is there any member on Zoom? Nope, seeing no one come forward. Thank you. And we now have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Can we have a roll call vote, please? Supervisor Leho?
Hi.
Supervisor Phillips?
Hi.
Supervisor Lopez?
Hi.
Supervisor Ruskew?
Hi.
And Chair Supervisor Adams? Hi. Thank you so very much. And now we will go into general public comment. And this is the time in our meeting when anyone from the public could comment or ask questions on anything that is not on today's agenda. I am not seeing anyone coming forward, and I will go to my esteemed clerk here and see if there are any hands raised. And we do have one hand raised?
Margie Kay.
Margie Kay. If you would like to make your comments, Ms. Kay, welcome to our board meeting today. And if you are able to unmute yourself by pressing star six. We're having some issues here as well. And I am not seeing her hand.
She's unmuted.
She is unmuted. You're unmuted, Margie. So are you ready to make your comments? Unfortunately, we are not hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I, I had unmuted. But so my name is Margie Kay, and I understand an appeal of a denial of Rio Vista Group application is coming to you on December thirteenth. The North County Land Use Advisory Committed Committee recommended denial, and the Planning Commission also did vote to deny for various reasons.
Madam Chair, this, this is not on the.
I urge, I beg you to do a site visit and see for yourself the Susan Street neighborhood and why others in Pahro oppose this project application. Also, a five-page letter from former supervisor Judy Pennycook dated February ninth, two thousand and two, twenty-two, was submitted, and I did not see it in the last Planning Commission packet, and this must be included to your also. Please go see the site before you hear it as a public hearing.
Thank you. Excuse me Supervisor Leho. Excuse me Supervisor Leho. I'm so sorry, but you have not been made aware. This is public comment at this point Supervisor Leho. And I'm afraid Ms. Kay has had some of her time taken. Ms. Kay, have you completed your remarks?
Yes, I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other member of the public who has their hand raised to make any comment on anything not on today's agenda? Seeing no additional hands raised. Okay, thank you. With that, I'm going to close public comment, and we will move on into our scheduled matters. The first scheduled matter, item number sixteen, is an item that is dealing with the California Forensic Medical Group, CMG, CFNG. And I see that we have the man of the day, Chief Bass approaching for a presentation. Thank you for being here for most of the day.
Good morning again. Thank you, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors. I'm getting all my public presentations out of the way before I retire, apparently. We're here this morning asking for a authorization to enter into a three-year extension with CFNG, the medical services provider for the inmates out to Monterey County Jail. I just want to state too that for the current fiscal year, we will be able to absorb, as we sit here today, the increase in costs in our current allocations. I want to highlight a little bit here, I believe, oh, I'm sorry, can we have the ability to share Chief Thornburg? Presentation, my apologies.
Are you signed into Zoom? Then you should be able to share.
I'm on the, I came in as a webinar. My email, but.
Oh, what's your email?
Thornburg J E. My apologies.
Wait a minute, there you are. Okay. It just promoted.
As mentioned, I think we've got our IT things a little bit out of sync here.
There we go.
There we go.
All right, again, my apologies for the delay. I, I just want to highlight here some of the enhancements to the extension. It includes increased staffing, increased mental health services, increased continuum or continuity of care, and then also penalties for contract non-compliance. Want to really talk a little bit, a lot of the increases in staffing are to the mental health area, if you will, for, well, or I'm sorry, CFNG. I just wanted to highlight some of the things that go on in, in the community as far as Monterey County, but then also in a correctional setting. And so you'll see here, there's been a twenty-nine percent increase in number of suicides in Monterey County over the past ten years versus only a six percent population increase. Suicide rate in California prisons continues to increase with a two percent increase between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Our trend's been steady over the last six years, where we average about one per year, unfortunately, is even one is, is too many. But our numbers have been fairly steady during that same timeframe. Again, staff increases, this kind of details what those increases are for the mental health component. They're adding a mental health coordinator, a full-time employee, nearly a full-time employee, mental health professional, and then two FTEs for psychiatry tech, and adding a discharge planner. This is an approximate, you know, about fourteen percent increase to their staffing overall. And I'll talk a little bit more about each of those here as we go forward a little bit. The discharge planner, we've got a lot of informal processes, if you will, that we utilize now to include working with county behavioral health when we release inmates and having a discharge planner on, onsite, if you will, will help really formalize those, those warm handoffs, that continuity of care between the people that are leaving our, our facility and that are re-entering into the community. We've seen that as a big need over the years and are hopeful that this will be a position that will help benefit those that leave our custody as they reintegrate. Enhanced mental health services, some of the things that we've started already and then also are in the beginning process are going to be bringing to you, which includes the Early Access Program. But we have the Medication Assisted Therapy, which we started earlier this year, and that's focused on those with serious mental illnesses. SMI is the common acronym used for that. We have the, the continuity of care planning that'll be coming on with this extension if it is approved. The JBCT program, which we've entered into along with CFNG, as well as the Department of State Hospitals, has been in, in existence now for a little over two and a half years, and has a, had a tremendous positive impact on those individuals in our care that have been, been deemed incompetent to stand trial by the courts. The Early Access Program that you see there is really a continuation of that JBCT program. It's to catch those before they go into JBCT and start those, that programming and those services before they go into JBCT. And then again, hopefully in the near future, and it won't be me, we'll be bringing you the contract to approve that. That again is also funded by the state that will allow those services to people before they enter the JBCT program. Salary increases are included in this extension. One of the things, as you see here, you know, Monterey County nurses have seen a twelve and a half percent increase since two thousand and twenty. The extension also provides salary increases for those mental or medical personnel that are working in the, in the correctional institution, the jail as well. That should help with recruitment and retention. Quality assurance, this is also a piece that, that's in the extension, and it talks about the getting accreditation from the National Committee on Correctional Healthcare, NCCHC, and also they're having penalties tied to not getting that certification completed. There's also penalties that have been built in for failure to, to staff the positions that they currently have, as well as for failure to timely triage medical requests. And then really just kind of lastly here, the term of the contract extension covers the length of the extension with the Hernandez litigation, which is three years. As I, I know you all are aware, and it says WellPath, I apologize, but CFNG WellPath continue to share in the defense and monitoring costs for that litigation. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions. I'd just like to add that in attendance today from WellPath, in case there's questions I can't answer, so you know, on Zoom, we have Dr. Corinne Katraba, who is the Vice President of Mental Health Services for WellPath, Mr. Ben Rice, who's counsel, and then in person, we have Mr. Justin Searle, who's President of the Local Government West Division, and Heather Berry, who is Regional Vice President. With that, I'll open it up for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chief Bass. I will go first to Supervisor Phillips and see if you have any questions or comments today on this item.
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Root, ask you?
I, I, thank you for that presentation and for the work that goes into ensuring the health and safety of our inmates. I know that this has been an incredibly challenging space to work in with limited options, and and in recognition of that, I think that while we, this is, this is our best option at this point, so I don't have any questions, but just want to acknowledge how incredibly challenging this particular space is to navigate and the, that I, I see and feel that there is a commitment to do right by ensuring the health and safety of everyone who's in our custody. So we share the commitment and will, I think, continue working to figure out what options could be available to us as we move forward and how we can best provide for this responsibility.
Thank you Supervisor.
Thank you. Supervisor Lopez, questions or comments?
None, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Leho, questions or comments?
Put aside, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. I, my comment to you would just be, I know that you really have the best interest of the inmates at heart, and I think that's really important. And I believe that as we move forward with this contract, it'll be something that all of us will be keeping a close eye on. But thank you again for all of the years that you've had oversight for this. Let me go out to the public and see if there's any member of the public who wishes to make comment or on this item. I am not seeing any hands raised. Okay, very good. All right, we'll bring it back then for a motion and a vote. And.
Move approval of staff recommendation.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We please have a roll call vote. Supervisor Leho?
Hi.
Supervisor Phillips?
Hi.
Supervisor Lopez?
Hi.
Supervisor Ruskew?
Hi.
And Chair Supervisor Adams? Hi. Thank you very much. With that, we will close the item and move on to item sixteen point one, which is to adopt a resolution of necessity, fondly called a Ron, finding and determining a variety of different issues that we will learn all about from our Director of Public Works, Facilities and Parks, Mr. Randy Ishi.
Good morning, and thank you Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors. As introduced, I'm Randy Ishi, Director of Public Works, Facilities and Parks. With me today is by Zoom is our Chief of Public Works, Enrique Saavedra. And he'll be sharing his screen momentarily to provide the public and the board with a few slides of a very brief PowerPoint presentation to remind the public of the property which we're talking about. The item before you is a continuation of the Resolution of Necessity hearing carried forward from the November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting of two weeks ago. At that point in time, the property owner, CUS Holding Trust, and the representative brought forward some issues for staff to consider. Since that point in time, staff has met with CUS Holding Trust's representatives. And to further the point, there were points that were raised by the representatives of CUS Holding Trust. Those points have been addressed in the board report and are summarized there. With that, I'd like to hand the floor over to our Chief of Public Works, Enrique Saavedra, to do the brief PowerPoint presentation showing the property which we're referring to. And we look forward to your board supporting this item for today, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ishi.
Good afternoon, morning, Supervisors, and Nick Saavedra, Public Works Chief. Like Director Ishi mentioned, I'm not going to show, share some slides that kind of outline the project and kind of recap some of the issues we talked about at our last meeting on November eighth. So with that, I'll share my screen. So Supervisors, again, we're, we're talking about the Davis Road Bridge project and road winding. And though, as in terms of the slides here, I'm going to just write some background to the project and reiterate our staff recommendation and ask the board to continue the public hearing and adopt the necessity. The necessity, a Ron for short, it's, it's to, for the county to acquire permanent road easement and a temporary easement and aerial electrical line easement all along Davis Road Bridge. The project itself, it consists of replacing the existing water crossing over Salinas River along Davis as well as winding Davis Road from Reservation Road to Blanco. It also includes some multimodal features like bike lanes and some enhanced transit features like the bus queue, jump lane at Davis and Blanco. For this project, we need to acquire some right-of-way for neighboring parcels, total sixteen parcels. We've been in negotiations with, with all of them and discussion with all of them. We secured five of these parcels and we're in the process of gain agreement on a couple of other ones that will come to the board here shortly. Just overview of the area that we're talking about here in this particular case with CUS, parcel two oh seven oh four two zero zero five. Here is the parcel itself, kind of a diagram of what, the shape of it, where it's located. This is, this is a, to orientate the board here, this is Davis Road, north is up. Here, this is Blanco Road, here's the city of Salinas, and down here is Reservation Road. Here's the, the Bluffs HOA community here. Here's the, the Bluffs uh HOA community here. Um, so the parcel um that C U S owns is pretty much um within the river channel area of the Seals River. And um, we're looking to acquire the land or easements on lands adjacent to Davis Road here. I also wanted to uh point, or point out or point like last time that we are proposing to replace this area with a little triangular area that's located here closer and to their facility and more accessible uh for their use as a sprayfield area. In more detail, here is uh that area that we're looking to obtain um from C U S Holdings Trust, and this is Davis Road. Since the road will be widened to four lanes or proposed to be widened to four lanes, we need to widen um the roadway. And this is the blue here is the permanent road easement looking to acquire. It's just over an acre, one point two acres to be exact. Um, during construction, we need to um provide some area for the counter to build the bridge. So we're proposing to get this area in yellow as the temporary construction easement. It measures approximately two acres, two point zero seven three acres. Um, this, the use of this area will, will, will cease by the county once the bridge is built. Um, our PG and E um proposes to put in a power line, a relocated power line that's currently on this side of the road to the upstream side um to be able to build a bridge. Um, and since the bridge construction requires the use of cranes and tall equipment, um, the power lines can't be adjacent to the bridge uh during construction. Um, like I mentioned earlier, this is the area that we're looking to um use as replacement area uh for use by C U S. This came about after our initial discussions with the property owners. Um, the C U S property owner was Tom Adcock, and desired for the county to pursue an easement for replacement area to offset our easement take or proposed easement take along Davis. So we worked with his neighbor, the Merrill Farms, um, and identified this area, Dragon Peace area. Um, it measures three point one eight five acres, which is greater than the area we're looking to um obtain along Davis Road, uh, of which approximately one point four acres can be used as a sprayfield area um according to our uh understanding of the permits. Uh, in fact, um, this area is currently being used as a sprayfield area, as you can see in this aerial uh photo here of the area that I'm talking about, which shows the, the clearing and the spring of, of the soil here. So with that, that's kind of a quick summary of the project and issues, and so we're asking the board to uh consider and adopt a resolution of necessity, find, determine that the public interest and necessity require the Davis Road Bridge replacement road by any project. But the project's plan or kit in a manner that will be most compatible with the risk, good and least injury. And the acquisition public use here and describe the subject parcel will not unreasonably interfere with or impair the continuance of any possible public use as it exists or may reasonably expect it to exist in the future. But the property sought to be acquired in sorry for the project. And with that, I'll, I'll turn it back to the, the board for any further comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Savedra. Let's see if we have questions. I'll first go to the uh Supervisor Phillips, who represents this area.
Uh, are, are we still negotiating with uh the Adcock people? Um, and are we negotiating just through attorneys or are we sitting, talking to the actual people so we can get something, something done?
You know, I see Mr. Freeze is on the line with his hand raised. I don't know if he would be in a position to answer the question or if we want to be speaking with our um internal folks.
I'd be very happy to discuss it if uh now's the appropriate time.
Well, let's see if there are other questions from the other board members, and then we will come back to Mr. Freeze.
Very well.
Okay. Um, are you, are you good to go to the other Supervisors for questions? Supervisor Root Askew, Supervisor Lopez?
None.
Supervisor, uh, Alejo?
None, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so let's go back to Supervisor Phillips to your question, and Mr. Freeze, if you would be kind enough to respond.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I'm Rick Freeze with Allen Mattkins Law Firm. I am in a domain counsel for uh California Utilities uh Service and for the C U S Holding Trust, the actual, actual property owner here. I, after the, the last hearing two weeks ago, we did uh have a meeting uh with the county's team. Uh, two days later, we had that meeting. We walked through the issues that we have, uh, and specifically there are four. Uh, number one is that the property has to be in fee, the, the replacement property has to be in fee, not in an easement, because for a sprayfield, you can't have public access, you can't spray on any property where the public might be there. That's, that's just fundamentally incompatible. In the very nature of an easement, retains rights in the property owner to use the property. So if we got an easement, it would effectively mean we can't use it for a sprayfield, so we, we need replacement acreage in fee. And we raised that issue. The second i- issue through our discussions is the amount of acreage. I, what's crucial here is we can't spray on every acre. It needs to be above the high watermark for the river. I, and what the county's team has missed is you saw in that diagram, the temporary construction easement, there's the roadway easement, temporary construction easement, and then the PG and E easement. PG and E easement with the power lines will have human access, so we won't be able to use that area for sprayfield. We'll have to set back a hundred, a hundred feet, because you can't spray within a hundred feet of, of where there's going to be human access. So we're never going to get back that temporary construction easement. It's sandwiched in between the road and the PG and E easement, so it won't be available to us as a sprayfield. So those acres are going to, to mean, need to be replaced as well. So as a result, C U S is going to need three point two acres of replacement property, because it's never going to be able to use that temporary construction easement again. And of that, two point nine seven acres needs to be above the high watermark. You saw that what the county is in discussions to acquire is an easement, not fee, and it's only going to provide one point four acres above the high watermark. So we presented all that, had discussions, email exchanges. We gave, gave the county's teams those specifics a week ago Monday, and we were told yesterday, okay, we're still looking at it, we'll get back to you Wednesday, so tomorrow. We haven't heard back from them, so those discussions are still ongoing. And until that is worked out, the county should not be adopting a resolution necessity. We should continue to have those discussions. I'd suggest that this hearing be, be continued further, because ultimately the county is going to need to replace this property in fee. I, whether it, it, the county works, works to get that or it forces C U S to go get that land, in which case the county's going to be paying for it under uh just compensation requirements, relocation act requirements, and even business goodwill requirements. The county's ultimately going to have to pay for this, so if we do it now upfront cooperatively, be able to get the land, get it replaced, get done with this, if the county rushes forward with a resolution necessity and litigation, it's going to get messy, it's going to involve litigation fees, it's going to be a dispute between neighbors instead of neighbors sitting down at the table working through this. Uh, C U S is not interested in stopping this road project, but it has to look out for its ratepayers, it has to comply with its permit requirements, so it's important that we continue those negotiations before this thing has the heat of a resolution necessity and litigation under it. Um, we're, we're ready to do that, as we showed the last time. We had a meeting within two days of, of the hearing, so we are asking that this be postponed. Um, you know, just for the record, we've submitted our written objections. My, my comments at the last hearing, there are sequel issues here. There, there are NEPA, National Environmental Protection Act issues, because you're getting federal funds. I gotta state all that for the record. We want to cooperate, but it shouldn't, should be done. Let's, let's get the feedback from
Thank you.
what C U S provided, and then address this in the future.
Thank you, thank you for your, your remarks. Supervisor Phillips, any comments? And I'll go out to Mr. Ishi and see if he has any uh, any comments he'd like to make here.
Well, I think what he's saying is, is absolutely right. I think it's premature, uh, and they brought up some very good issues that the county has to deal with, and I know they're out there staking it today. So I think it's premature to do that. It's just going to cost everybody more money, but that's.
Is there not some concern that we would lose the federal funding if we did not move forward with this?
I doubt what they said. If we take the money and put it into a, an account that's, that designated strictly for uh uh, for replacement property, uh, that, that would, would account for it, but th- they can address, they can address that.
Thank you.
Supervisors for the questions, and we appreciate the comments and concerns being brought forward by the C U S Holding Trust's representatives uh to the point of the process that's involved with depositing funds into the condemnation account. Uh, in very brief summary, and Chief of Public Works Enrique Savedra can provide more detail to it. This R O N process is that pathway in order to deposit those funds into that condemnation account. And uh, to the earlier point about uh continuing negotiations, those negotiation discussions can continue uh while this R O N is in process and filed. So I will open up the floor to Chief of Public Works Enrique Savedra, if there's anything further to add to any of the questions or comments that were raised.
So can I just be sure I understood correctly, though? Are you saying that in order for us to be able to put the money aside into a separate account, we must go forward with the RON uh process?
Yes, and I will defer to Enrique to provide a little bit more description on how all that looks mechanically, as well as our county council team that were with us and as part of, helped us through this process, inclusive of Mary Perry and uh Council Shane Strong. But Enrique, would you like to take that?
Yes, I thank you, Randy. Um, um, like Supervisor Adam mentioned, there is, there is a um, a time um issue with the funding uh that we have allocated for the right-of-way phase of the project. Um, um, and we, we needed, I guess, uh, resolve the, the, either the, the agreements for the right-of-way takes or be able to, be able to deposit whatever funds into an escrow account or with the state of California. Um, subject to California Treasury. Once we file open RON, the, uh, we need that instrument to be able to uh deposit those funds with the state. Um, like Randy mentioned, also, we, we tend to continue um talking to C U S Holding Trust and try to resolve this matter. Um, you know, and, and cooperatively. Um, we appreciate their, their support for the project, um, and we, we want to learn more about, also about their, there's the sprayfield limitations. Um, I know Mr. Chris mentioned that the area under the utility wires can't be sprayed. I read, I do want to point out that there are a number of utility lines currently crossing C U S property that's being sprayed under, so I, I need to know more about um what the limitations are. I understand limitations regards to the ordinary high watermark and the distance from a roadway or public, uh, other public spaces, but I'm not, uh, I was, I've been trying to get information regarding to uh overhead wires. Um, so hopefully I respond to the questions. If not, I'm here to address it further needed.
Thank you, Enrique. So I guess, uh, as I look at this, my question would be that if, in fact, it still sounds like we need to do this process in order for us to be able to sequester the funding, to get and sequester the funding, and Mr. Freeze, if you and your client are aware that that's why we're doing this, I, I don't know why everybody would, you know, lawyer up even more than we've already done.
Well, well, Chair Adams, say, one, I'd like to point out that you haven't acquired a number of the properties. So you're not at a place where you satisfy that, and having a defective resolution of necessity is not going to set you up for success in making deposits. You are not going to succeed in court, so you're going to wind up causing more harm to your efforts to get this funding. Better to work it out now. The parties, you know, they're in disagreement over who wasn't talking properly to whom, but they're talking now. They should be doing that talking, and if it doesn't work, county can come forward with a proper resolution necessity that has actually addressed this and hopefully narrowed it down to a few issues. My guess is it'll be resolved, and we won't have this, but to start on a path like this, when you don't need to, because if you don't have the other property's interests yet, so I, we seem to be the front one, not the back one. There's got to be some level of time where you've already acquired those other properties, so another two weeks, another four weeks to allow these negotiations to go forward. Instead of going down a, a path that's defective, seems to me the, the practical and neighborly way to do it.
Thank you, and I understand that um either Sean um or uh Mary uh Barry are on the line, is that correct? I'm wondering if either of you might be able to provide additional um thought to us. We're kind of limited. I'm only able to look at my screen. And Mary, are you there, Mary Barry?
Yes, I am. Um, thank you. So the county has acquired some of the other properties, and the resolution of necessity is needed in order to file the eminent domain action. And for us to deposit the funds with the state treasury, we actually need to file that action. And as far as negotiating with um C U S, we can continue to do that. Um, they have already registered their objections with the county, and we can continue to work on the four issues. I think they are um mostly resolved, except for the issue of acreage. As far as access, that's been resolved. Staking, we've done that. Um, fee, I believe the county um is prepared to do that as long as we can work it out with the Merrill. So the only question really is the acreage, and for us to move forward, we actually do need that resolution of necessity. And we can continue to work things out. We can enter into a tolling agreement for C U S to um you know, for them to not have to uh respond um to our complaint, but at this point, because of the timing, um eminent domain actions can take up to twelve months. And I think we have four months to actually have these funds committed. Well, maybe four and a half or five, um, because these, these funds have to be committed by April of twenty twenty-three, so Enrique can elaborate on, on the timing, um, but I guess this action has really brought everyone to the table, and I almost have to thank them for bringing some of these issues to our attention, because um we do need to move, move forward, and last week or two weeks ago, uh Supervisor Alejo asked us to work on the resolution, which we've done, so I, I think it's just time, and we can keep negotiating.
Thank you very much for your comments. I see that we have Thomas Adcock with his hand raised. Would you like to weigh in? And there we go.
Y- yes, yeah, this is Tom Adcock. I'm the President of California Utility Service. Um, the entity that provides wastewater service to approximately one thousand one hundred residents or homes uh in the Highway sixty-eight corridor. Um, I just want to be clear. I think that our attorney has uh explained it very well to the board, uh, but I'll just put a little bit better face on it. If the county moves forward today, California Utility Service will have to, through its attorneys, uh, defend itself and defend the property that we have, um, and that will cost significant money. As a utility, all of our money comes from our ratepayers eventually. So there's going to be a cost associated with this action, and eventually, it will go eventually to our ratepayers. Uh, I, I think that we have tried to work with the county, um, and I think we are working with the county, uh, to get this resolved, and I would like to get it resolved, as, as our attorney said, and that's correct. We are not in any way against the project, the roadway project. We just have to have the amount of space that's being taken, the amount of acreage of land taken from the utility has to be replaced. That's just what's necessary, and it has to be replaced, and as the, as our attorney, Mr. Freeze, explained, in fee title, so that the utility has control over that land and that there can't be public access. So I just want to make sure that the So I just want to make sure that the board understands there's a financial ramification to the action that they're going to take today. For the utility, it's eventually its ratepayers and for the county, because we will have to seek compensation from the county for forcing this action. So that's what I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Adcock. So I, what I would like to do now is bring it back to our board for any further comment or questions. In, no, Sir, Sir Phillips, anything else?
No, I think it's premature and if we really got in and kept working on it and got the issues resolved about whether the, to me, the sticking point now is whether the power lines has to have a hundred foot setback from power lines. I think that's the only issue and then getting the rest of the land. So I think it's premature, so I won't support the motion.
Thank you very much. Would you like to have any final comments?
No further comments, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all so much for this robust conversation. From the way that I have been hearing it, though, it appears as if it's necessary for us to move forward with this resolution of necessity. But that does not necessarily stop the entire process. That we will be able to continue to negotiate as we have been doing. It sounds as if from what I've heard from Ms. Perry, that we're very close to resolution on, on most of the things. And I would not want to jeopardize our being able to continue with the project in total by not moving forward with this resolution. I see Supervisor Alejo's hand is up at this point.
Madam Chair, I would agree with you. Certainly filing this motion gets the process going. As county council staff just stated, these processes could take some numerous months. But it kind of helps, I think encourages more negotiation by, by doing so. Because then the clock starts, right? So I, I think, I want to thank county council for making the, the findings of necessity stronger than, than where we were at our last meeting on this, on this matter. So I think we're ready to move forward on this. And so I'm, I'm, I'll make a motion to support staff recommendation.
Thank you, and we have a second, so if we could please have a roll call vote. Supervisor Leho?
Hi.
Supervisor Phillips?
I'll just say that when you file a lawsuit against someone, it usually doesn't help the communication process embellishes. So my answer is no.
Supervisor Lopez?
Hi.
Supervisor Ruskew?
Hi.
And Chair Supervisor Adams?
Hi. Thank you very much. Thank you for all of the work all of you from both sides and all perspectives are doing. Let's hope we can get this worked out without a lot of acrimony. Thank you again. With that, we will close item 16.1 and move on to other board matters. Turning to our acting county administrative officer, have you any comments for the meeting today? Thank you very much, and are there any new referrals that you'd like to bring forward?
I'm not aware of any referrals, Chair.
I believe on the agenda, there's a referral on long range funding for Parro.
Yeah, so sorry, there is a referral, I'm sorry about that, to look at long range funding for a Parrow Park. And with that, we'll assign that to the appropriate department. And also the finance group will work with the public works department, public works facilities and parks on that referral.
And it appears as if there may be a second new referral regarding an opioid settlement funding program for Monterey County. And we will also take a look at that and move that into the appropriate place. Now let's go to board comments and I will, I'm looking at you, kid, so we'll start with Supervisor Phillips.
Put me on the spot here, but I had a busy week. Monday, November 14th, we did the grand opening. Everybody knew about it was coming before, but we did the grand opening in downtown Casterville at the old Squallah Building where Phil's is, is now being housed and a lot of people come into our grand little city. The next day, November 15th, I had breakfast at Monterey Peninsula Chamber Breakfast at the Marriott and where Vista Presentation was very informative and enlightened to the people about what they're doing at Vistra Battery Storage. Largest battery storage facility in the world and they're going to be making a presentation to us early next month. Friday, the Bank of America, they asked me to be up at Rancho Cielo. The Bank of America made a donation to Rancho Cielo of $50,000 and they wanted a senior citizen there. So I was there to be part of that. The next day, Saturday, I was at the Roma's Park dedication. These people have been working for 20 years, 20 years to build this park. They got a dog park, then the other, and Chris Lopez and I were able to get some grant funding for them. And when the county came in with 250,000, that really helped them get over the, the top. And these people are so tenacious and dedicated. It was nice to see it finally come to fruition. And that's another thing that I think I mentioned to incoming Supervisor Church that we ought to look to the funding that I talked about for Parro Park to also have some maintenance funding for Roma's Park. These parks in North County, they, they, they build them themselves and they get very little funding from the county on it. And I, I think it's important that North County gets its fair share of parks money. And these people can run it a lot cheaper than, than we can. Next Tuesday, the North Monterey County Lulac is coordinating the food distribution in Casterville at Our Lady of Refuge. It's going to start at nine o'clock. We have limited food. And only enough for about 300 families. Last year, we provided enough food for 500. With that in mind, we're trying to limit the food to Casterville residents and not to those most in need. On December 12th, we'll have a Murphy Road Crossing recognition. And I got to say, and I've mentioned to Randy, but I've gotten so much positive feedback from our county stepping in and what they did at Murphy's Crossing. And they want to have a ribbon cutting, kind of recognize that. And we're having a ribbon cutting for the clinic out in Crondale. That Nativida Hospital is taking over that clinic. I forget when it is, but I'll, I'll, I'll get it for you next time. And next, December 20th, I'm going to have a holiday open house for recognizing, thanking all the people who served on the various commissions and boards on it as I head out of town. And I think we'll do it at Phil's Fish Market instead of at my office like we usually do. So with that, thank you, Madam Chair.
What's the date on that one?
December 20th, but so we'll, we'll see if we can let you sneak in there if you want to come out to Phil's.
Thank you. Supervisor Ruth Askew?
Yeah, thank you. I was able to attend the California State Association of Counties Conference with some of my colleagues. It was great to welcome many of the newly elected supervisors from across the state. And then I flew home early to celebrate my birthday here in our board chambers for a 13 hour marathon coastal commission meeting. So I just want to recognize all of my neighbors who spent their day here with us and who provided incredibly compelling and moving testimony. Thank you for, for being involved in the process. And on a couple upcoming dates, December 8th, from five to seven, we'll be hosting our holiday hello in our Marina, our Marina office. Everyone's welcome from five to seven PM. We have a, we have the Military Veterans Affairs folks moving in next door as well. So hopefully it'll be a great celebration, not just of District Four folks, but also the incredible achievement of getting the Veterans Hall opened and up and running. And then the day before that, on Wednesday, December 7th, I'll be hosting my next Wednesdays with Wendy Community Hour. And we'll be talking about the district strategic plan that we put together and have been working towards the goals outlined. So you're welcome to join us and weigh in and tell us what we should be working on in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Ruth Askew. Supervisor Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I know we haven't met since Veterans Day, but it was a wonderful parade through downtown Salinas. And I want to thank all the organizers who made that day possible. It was a lot of fun to be out there with my colleagues and the community turnout was incredible. So once again, want to wish them congratulations on a beautiful event pulled off to honor our veterans here in Monterey County. Last week I was able to attend CSAC as part of that conference. The Latino Caucus is one of the caucuses for CSAC and I'm honored to share that I was elected president of that body. So I'll be continuing to represent us on that, on that body as well. So I'm thankful to my colleagues for their support in that effort. From there, I did head back to DC to do a little bit of work with the National Association of Latino Elected Officials. So I spent the end of last week there doing a little bit of mentoring and then doing a little bit of the work on some big projects coming up in the district. So thankful for that opportunity as well. I want to say that our Project Santa list is opening up on Monday for volunteers. We've got an incredible team that's been put together already, but if you want to help out, Santa Lance's helicopter and with the help of 400 liget and distributes toys and food to families in South County. That opportunity, the list to sign up for that will open up on Monday here just after the holiday. I do want to wish everybody a Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving, and I hope that it's a relaxing one. Remember that there's a lot of bugs out there right now. I know it recently went through my family and my, my day was still recovering. It was really, really hard on him. He lost some weight and it's still stuck in his lungs with that nasty RSV going around. So just be cautious out there during these holidays and take appropriate precautions. And lastly, Madam Chair, just wanted to speak to the way you opened the meeting and mentioning Club Q. I want to thank the Employee Resource Group, the ERG for Monterey County, who sent out a great statement last night. And at the end of that statement invited community to gather in remembrance, but also to come together to continue to support and find solutions and support those who are hated only for loving someone. And so I did have the opportunity to join the recommended event last night in Marina at the Lutheran Epiphany Church. And I want to thank the county employees who came together to put out the statement, but also invite and make sure that we were holding space during such a crisis and critical moment for community. And so I appreciated being in the room with other elected leaders, including recently mayor-elect of Monterey, Tyler Williamson, who helped coordinate the event, as well as Sam Gomez from the epicenter, who helped put that together. Our elected, our sheriff-elect, Tim Lainero was in the room, as well as council members Alex Arizola and Anthony Rocha, as well as trustee Yuri Anderson and Jen Triner from Marina Coast. So I'm just thankful to them for showing up, being in the room. I know it meant a lot to the folks there. But as we, as we take this celebration of being grateful on Thursday, I think it's just important to hold space and lift those memories up of those who lost their lives in that tragedy. But thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity.
And thank you for your touching words. Supervisor Luis Alejo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would join in with my colleagues in denouncing the senseless and depraved violence against five victims that lost their lives tragically and the 18 survivors who suffered injuries. And I really want to commend the two heroes who stepped in to detain and restrain the perpetrator of that, that violence, including, including one of them who was a longtime Army veteran originally from San Diego. So I want to just thank those heroes for, for doing what we saw many others not do. And while they responded quickly and did what they needed to protect not only themselves and their families that were in that room, their friends, but also fellow, fellow Americans. So I, I join in, in solidarity with denouncing this violence. And hopefully we will enact stricter gun reforms to help prevent these incidents from happening in the future. I also want to wish all our, our families, all my Salinas constituents, and certainly all our county employees a happy Thanksgiving as well. As we're celebrating with their families, we know that there's many residents in our county who are, are living outdoors in the cold and in tents. And so I just wanted to really thank our chair for representing Monterey County last Friday in Sacramento. The, our legislative team and I had met with the governor's staff on Monday of last week in advance of that meeting, just to make sure we had a lengthier conversation. And, and pushing back on what the governor had said, because we strongly believe that Monterey County and San Benito County have made progress. It's not all the progress we want to see, but we have made significant progress in terms of reducing homelessness in the last two point in time counts. And we wanted the governor to be aware of that and to also know that our local plan is very ambitious, that it aims to reduce homelessness by 50% over the next five years. And actually, our two counties, Monterey and San Benito, are ranked second in the state for the most reduction in homelessness compared to all the other respective counties. And I think it's because of that fact that after Friday's meeting, the governor's office, the state agency leading on this informed Roxanne Wilson, who's our homeless services director, that Monterey County doesn't have to do anything more. While other counties have to revise their plans and have to do some other, have to do a meeting. We don't have to do anything more. Our, our plan was accepted. We can now submit our application for the next round of funding. But we should be getting our HAP three homelessness funding in the coming days, hopefully. So I just want to commend our staff for doing that follow-up work. And the governor's Central Coast Central Valley staff are also listening to us and making sure the governor is going to have that information ahead of that meeting. But I think it's a great thing. We all know that we, that we have a lot more work to do. We're willing to do it. But we want the state to be a partner and support our work rather than pointing fingers at us. So it was a good result for us moving forward. And the last thing I would just say is that I, I'm doing a holiday backpack and gift drive once again for, for all the children and all the residents staying at our share center. I'm, I'm doing that again with Salinas Mayor Kimberly Craig. So we'll be sending out an email to all the employees if they want to chip any donations in for the holidays. I know we've already raised some money from some of our sponsors from last year, but we're just trying to make the holidays a little brighter, especially for the kids, but also for all the adults who call the share center their home during the holiday season. And we hope to again, team up with the Salinas Fire Department in delivering those toys along with Santa. With that, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks Supervisor Alejo. And following up, I was really thankful for the opportunity to get to participate in the governor's convening of California Counties on homelessness. And, and I was so proud to be able to present the plan and the successes that we've been having in our own county. And in the comprehensive approach that we've taken to combating homelessness. And I know that there was, you know, that our voice was heard and it was really, it was really wonderful. The staff has just been unbelievably effective in the work that they've been doing on homelessness. And I appreciate very much Supervisor Alejo, the leadership that you have shown on this. And I think all of us working together and increasing the communication has done a great deal to provide the kinds of successes that we're having. So it was a wonderful day and I was really thrilled when they told us that I, we did not have to apply for the third and that the fourth is going to be forthcoming as well, branches of pockets of funding. And my favorite subject, water, although emotions might still be running high after the lengthy coastal commission committee that we had sitting right here at this dais just this past week. I just want to say that it was so touching and amazing to see the outpouring of, of Wendy, your community of Marina. I don't think I've ever seen such an impassioned group of people who came together to see those Girl Scouts and the Brownies and the work that they did. Just so engaged in community, to know that their voices are being heard at such a young age is really wonderful. It was, it was very, very stirring and very moving and very difficult for the outcome. And I know it's going to take a while for our community to heal over that one. As we move forward in whatever ways that we can, though, we're going to continue. And we're having our third regional water forum on December 6th, the 2:30, again here in these chambers. And we're not going to be focusing on any of the specific issues of desalination or any other specific projects. What we're going to focus on this time is looking at some of the successes that are taking place in other parts of the, of the state. Example, we're having Timothy Quinn, who's the executive officer of the San Joaquin Valley Water Collaborative Action Program, who is going to be doing a presentation to us on their perspective, the statewide perspective on water. who is going to be doing a presentation to us on their perspective, the statewide perspective on water challenges. But he wants to speak particularly on the importance of, of regional collaboration and what they've been able to, to, how they've been able to succeed in the, in the Central Valley, where some of the problems are even worse than we're facing here. We also will be talking with, having a presentation from the Department of Water Resources Facilitated Support Services Program, which is a funding opportunity for the board to consider at a later meeting. But it would allow for us to be able to have supported facilitation to look at some of the overarching issues that we have around water in our county. We're going to be having my county, my team and I are going to be having a reception on December 15th from 4:00 to 5:30 at my Monterey County Courthouse office. And we too will be honoring and thanking our commissions and commissioners and all of the other volunteers that spend so much time and effort throughout the, the district and thank them for their support and the work that they do. And last but not least, I'll just echo everyone and ensure that we all remember to be so very grateful for the things that we have. There's not one of us who's in this room or even listening to us on Zoom or who's a part of all of this, that does not have something to be thankful for. And that's what this holiday focuses on. It's not about the food, it's not about the drinks, it's not about the football. It's really about the thankfulness. And my hope is that we all have the opportunity to pause just for some moment on that day and be so very thankful of the generosity in our hearts. So thank you so much.
Madam, Madam Chair, I failed to mention that since it was brought up, I was very proud to testify before the Coastal Commission and hopefully bring some needed water to the Monterey Peninsula in the DSal. And I had the opportunity the next day to run into Jack Ainsworth. And I told him that wasn't just the end of it. In North County, we're going to need a DSal project or a Brackish Water Supply project. And that's something I intend to work on, pushing forward after I'm off the board. So I just was very proud to join with a lot of people to try to bring needed water to the Monterey Peninsula. Thank you.
Well, we have many options.
Yeah.
Thank you. With that, I just wanted to mention that we will not be having our regular board meeting next week on November 29th. We will be having a special board meeting, looking at some staff evaluations. Our regular board meeting, the next one, will be December 6th. So I look forward to seeing many of you back at that time. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting with a wish for very happy. Oh, sorry, I forgot to ask our readout from closed, closed session.
Thank you, Chair. In closed session, the board approved the initiation of litigation and that's it.
Thank you so much. How could I have forgotten? Okay, with that, we're done. Thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.